Good evening, folks. It's six o'clock.
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you very much for attending. Item, oh, just for the recording, this is the Finance and Personnel Committee on Tuesday, the 19th of September. Welcome. Item 283, does anybody have any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interests, please? None? Thank you. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Apologies received from councillors and from platforms. Stuart Terry.
Not for me, thank you.
David, thank you very much. I think everybody else is here. Minutes, item 285, to confirm the minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee held on the 15th of August, are you content as a committee that they are a true record? Thank you very much. Always helpful if somebody nods. I shall sign them as a true record. Moving on to item 286, approval of payments. These were circulated in advance with your papers, as well as the code, so you knew what they were referring to. Are you content as a committee to approve the list of payments? Chris Harvey proposing. Can I have a second there? David?
Yeah, I'm Tom.
All agreed? Thank you very much. Item 287, we've got the financial report for the five months ended the 31st of August, which will probably merge into the discussion about the budgets because they're very similar. Anything specific about the five-month report, Alan, that you wanted to add?
I think the five-month report shows a surface of 69, 63. Just went back and looked at the last few months, every month that has been going. It gets effects a little bit in terms of the revised budget that we are going to talk about in the next item. Our expenditure is a lot lower than we forecast, our income is slightly better than we forecast, and this is purely property rent. And I think probably a mistiming on the rule of payments authorities. We spoke about that at the amenities committee, where we're not really sure which chunk of money belongs to which particular financial year. We'll be grateful to receive it, and we book it as soon as we receive it, but we're just trying to get more information on that. And that's really it. On the expenditure side, we're down significantly in terms of our personnel budget, and that's because we over budgeted our salary costs. We still need our salary increase to come through, and we over budgeted our utility costs because we did our budget at the peak of the energy crisis last year.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the five-month report specifically? No? I think some of it will come out in the next item anyway. So, item 288 is the review of the revised budget. So, we're almost halfway through the financial year. So, Alan's been crunching the numbers up to this point and looking ahead to the end of March. He's got a crystal ball somewhere in the Carnegie. Anything, Alan, to add to the revised budget?
I, this was done in a very short period of time. It's just timing, because we had, what we did is we tried to get it all done in August. We then sat down with all the management team, and we actually then went and have done a month-by-month forecast to the end of the financial year. I think sometimes I make things very complicated for myself because I don't have the chance to sit back and reflect. So, the budget, it shows that we're going to have a surface of about 83, 382. And yet, that sounds quite encouraging and exciting. And one of the reasons is just the mismatch between project income and project expenditure. And reflecting on it this afternoon, I thought, well, why did I include project income if I haven't put a forecast for project expenditure? So, I've done some calculations. Our true surface would be forecast to be 28, 382. And then I was really pleased to turn over the commentary report that I distributed yesterday, and you'll see that in the conclusion, we actually say the forecast surface is 28, 382. And that is where we sit at the moment. So, we provided all the new positions that the council have approved, we've looked at some of the other costs, and that's where we're sitting at. I just want to also point out that on the expenditure side, on amenities in particular, we've had to budget for mechanical cutting because our grazing hasn't worked. We had quotes in last week, they were exceptionally high. The good news is, yesterday, some quotes, some old quotes have come in, and they're not as high. But that's really what the change is. The mechanical cutting or bottom cost common, cost amount, and for me though, you know, we really forecast significant expenditure there. So, what we've been, what we're doing this year is at the moment, as Nick's, the Tanty managers, trying to procure cutters, you know, mechanical cutting, we're also trying to procure grazing. So, then as soon as the mechanical cutting's done, we're ready to do that. Otherwise, next year, I'm going to be doing the same revised budget, saying, you know, we didn't get a grazer on pace. So, those two are receiving quite a significant amount of focus, so that that doesn't recur in future years.
And I think it's right in saying that the new ETA quote for the mechanical cutting came as a result of the presentations that we had from Northwood Wildlife Trust.
All the, all the quotes, we, the two presentations we had from, well, one was from Northwood Wildlife Trust and the other one, one of course, they gave us some names, people that they use a lot. We've approached them, and the quotes have been significantly better. So, we've been quite. But that's a positive outcome of those presentations.
Really good news. David?
Why didn't the grazing work?
We, the process to, sorry, can I answer to?
Of course.
The process to acquire a grazer worked very well. I think we had, we had a select group, we bought some specialists. I know councillor Harvey was part of that, councillor Hodgson. And we selected two grazers that we thought would be, would be appropriate. What's happened subsequently is that they have come back and said, for example, at Castle Park, we can't put goats there because the goats would, you know, would be out of the enclosure fence. The fence is not able to cope with the goats. We initially, when we did the grazer selection, they were going to put cattle on. Now, they say, well, the cattle will just push over the fencing, so you have to put the electric fencing on. And the other grazer that we selected has had significant sheep attacks in Bonham Cross Common, so it's pulling back the sheep. And we heard through our two presentations that that grazer's retiring, I think, in October. So, it's just, it just hasn't been, we started off in a very keen process, and I think a very good process. It's just one of those things that just hasn't worked out for us.
So, in that case, you're all like, lovely fencing, so plus three croins?
Kind of. So, we've had quite a lot of conversations at amenities about this, and we had some really useful presentations, and there are management plans for all of our sites. And what we are doing next is working up a bit of a five-year plan on what we're going to do. Yeah, it's very much on the radar because if we don't, well, there's a conservation aspect, but also it's a financial black hole if we don't deal with it properly. And as I said, if we're relying on mechanical cutting all the time, it's going to cost us a fortune.
If it's in hand, that's fine.
Yeah, no, it's a very pertinent question, and there will be some proposals coming forward soon, I'm sure.
On that subject, I'll catch you at the end of this because it may be the help. I've got something else up.
Brilliant.
Okay.
Lots of guinea pigs.
No, rabbits. It's rabbits. It was one of the conversations. Anyway, we'll come to it.
Any other questions, folks? I've got a few for you. As I do, I read the report. One of the things we spoke about here before, and I think it was at venues, waste disposal costs. In the revised budget, we've put waste disposal costs up from £11,900 to £20,500 for the year, which is a huge amount of money to deal with waste. Where are we at with the new contract? Because is that forecast cost, assuming we get this contract, a contract in place, or is that assuming we don't have a contract?
It assumes we won't have a contract. And the reason is, is one of the, one of the to-do lists is to, as this committee, it's on our action plan, is that we have to address the waste disposal costs. So, we're at the stage, we just need to accurately forecast what our waste would be. Because what we're doing at the moment, all our waste, regardless whether it's recyclable or not, goes into general waste and is quarantined away. So, we're just going to do a little bit of a scientific calculation to work out, you know, if we have glass, if we have cardboard, if we have paper, et cetera, how do, what do we actually need? And then we can have a formal quote, and then we've just got to check, we might have to come back to council to bypass, also bypass, to ask for the suspension of certain financial regulations and standing orders, because we might want to do a short-term contract while we actually formalise it in a longer term, because it might come out at above £10,000, which is our limits for doing that. We've had raised it at SMT, so we should have, hopefully we'll have those numbers sooner rather than later. I'm really embarrassed if I've come back to the next finance meeting and say that we exactly where we are now.
Yeah. I think my concern is we're spending over £20,000, or likely to spend over £20,000, and it's all going to landfill. We're not even recycling any of it. So, I'm glad that it's being looked at, but that's a huge amount of money for, for waste.
It's fine.
How many sites, that's long?
Two sites. So, it's from the Carnegie, and then we have waste disposal at the cemetery, where we bring, for example, our allotment waste, any cemetery waste is all done there.
The allotment waste was covered now recently. I remember discussing about that.
It's, we, we are managing it. We are managing it. Unfortunately, at one stage, we were burning, which is, which is not ideal, so we've kind of put it, put it, put it stopped there. The only, the significant waste disposal costs we have from allotments is when we find asbestos. So, we've had two instances this year alone of where we've had to do that. And it could be a small bag, but it costs a huge amount of money to have it disposed of. So, we are trying to manage it. The other thing that came out of our discussions is that we've been, we're using our current supplier to provide all our skips. And we've been advised to go and get some quotes for that, because, you know, our skip costs are quite high, they're quite a significantly, and we can be now, are going to shop around. So, every time we need a skip, we're going to shop around and get a good price, a better price, hopefully, and then use that to reduce some of the costs.
Okay. Legal and professional fees, there's been a £2,000 increase for the year. Are there any significant legal and professional, professional fees that we should be aware of that we're incurring?
Not at the moment. I've just averaged it out. It doesn't work on an average basis, but that's one of the costs that we, that we do look at, that perspective.
Okay, that's good news. Bank charges, the budget was £3,000 for the year, likely to be £5,000. Is that because we're banking more cash linked to the Guildhall tea rooms, or is it just because the fees have increased?
I think what it is is that we have more activities. So, credit card processing fees are, we have a lot more credit card transactions, thank goodness, because things like allotments, we were previously doing in cash through the, through the front office, a lot of that's done through, through a back office. Our credit card utilisation, if you remember, prior to Covid, I did a calculation, we were probably 20% of our income was received by credit card, 80% cash. It's now turned around. We're receiving about 70% to 80% credit card transactions and 20% cash. And the credit card transactions, the transactional fee probably represents what that is. But there is a saving in terms of us not having to go to the bank and bank often and have carried higher change.
Okay. Yeah, I support £5,000 in fees. I think that's quite a lot of money. But it would be interesting, not anytime soon, if you could do a split on credit card or electronic payments versus cash payments, just so we can see that breakdown. Bad debts written off, there was no budget. There's now a budget of £1,000. Are there any bad debts likely, or are you just being cautious?
No, I think there may be something on the market. And I need to have a, I'm just worried that there is going to be something. I raised the fist yourself in the mayor way back in May. It's just a matter of getting to some fidelity over that.
Okay, that's fine. I'd much rather we account for it and make an allowance than not, but I was curious. Bar takings and Carnegie hire are remarkably on budget. There's very little variance. And when you consider, that's quite a variable thing. We can't predict that. So, I thought that was good news, that actually they've done incredibly well to be on budget to that extent. Guildhall catering, we anticipated income of £32,000, and the new budget was £16,000. That's a significant production. And then I was curious, because catering purchases, which presumably we buy stock to sell in the tea rooms, we originally budgeted £11,000, but now it's only gone down to £8,000. We've lost £16,000 in income, but we've only lost £3,000 of purchasing of catering.
What we did is, when we did an analysis on a, on a month-by-month basis, we lowered our GP percent. I think we had previously budgeted at 60, 65%, and we looked at what's been happening recently, and it's sitting at about 50%. So, we took the lower, to be conservative, we took a lot of figure and we projected that. So, that's created the adjustment. So, for every, there is a ratio between the two. So, it's, what is your GP percentage in the five, first five months, and we've applied that going forward.
Okay. And the only other two, amenities, as is always the case with the amenities budget, there's lots of assumptions of full spends, because it's very hard to predict if we're going to spend all of that in amenities. And then burial costs, income reduced significantly. That's due to us now not charging people for the burials, and they pay the funeral directors directly. So, you know, we've lost that income. Who on the budget sheet has that sort of corresponding reduction in expenditure? What does that show?
I think our cemetery is actually, for the first time in a number of years, we are actually way below our capacity. So, whereas last year, for example, the capacity reached from a calendar year, from January to December, we are down quite a bit this year, and we are, we don't believe that that's going to change. So, the reduction in income, when we did the original budget, we actually took out the grave digging component of that. But the reduction is around the number of burials. We forecasted the number of burials are going to be significantly lower this year. If you remember, previous meetings, I had been saying that I need to go and investigate it. I actually did have a chance to sit down, go through all the data, and that's one of the reasons why this year's income is a lot lower.
Okay. So, we're not seeing a corresponding drop in expenditure, because essentially that's staff time and overheads related to the cemetery, but just not getting the same level of income.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I suppose that's a good thing, that there's not so many people dying.
Yes.
Yeah, there has been a big increase.
And that's an affordability issue. The other issue is memorials, where previously people took memorials quite quick. It looks like there's a longer delay. It's been something varying in the memorial being put up. So, the point that's on next, it came out of my meeting with the various administrator.
I think some of that is to do about capacity of the funeral directors. Speaking as somebody that's been trying to get a memorial sorted, they don't even have capacity to deal with, you know, requests for memorials. So, there's a bit of a backlog. Okay, that's good. Well, I'm glad we got to the bottom of that, because we weren't sure if it was missing invoices or delayed invoicing, but actually it's a genuine reduction in. Okay. That's my list. Any other financie, budgety questions? Nope. Okay. Anything else you?
No, no.
No. So, we've done this now, revised budget. Do you do another revised budget some point later? Or do we not look at this again now until?
On our timetable, formally, I would do it in January, but I am, I was having a think about this this morning, we will try to do one every month, just quickly update our forecast. Because it's all modelled, so it's actually quite easy, because I'd be very embarrassed to come back to the committee if I, if our forecasts, if some certain assumptions had been wrong. I'd like to come back to the committee sooner rather than later. So, we will keep an eye on it on a month-by-month basis, but formally, we'll do another budget in January, just in case we had to do something in the last three months.
And given we do the month-end reports anyway, that's not too much additional work. Okay, we'll move on then. Item 289, personnel report, to receive and discuss the personnel report for the month of August. Peter?
So, the report is sent out with the agenda paperwork. Our recruitment to the events officer and the market coordinators was successful. The events officer starts in a couple of weeks, and the market coordinator will be forthcoming in the fall. We did have one resignation yesterday, which is from the tea room. And we are going to take the opportunity to redo that role until that, we did a little bit of effort. And then what we do is we'll, as it, in turn, these, until the decisions might go council, what we want to do with that role.
David?
Tea room resignation, are we going to do an exit interview or anything like that? How much notice have the person given?
They only have one contract, have to do four weeks' notice, and yes, I will.
Okay, could one of us could have, is it, is it okay for the council to be involved?
We get the vice chair of the committee here, if you want to sit on that.
Is that okay?
If you want to.
Yeah, okay. Could I take part in that? Yeah, yeah, we'd love to.
Yeah, I think that, you know, yeah, if it's happening, you might as well. It's always good to understand why people are leaving. So, yeah, it helps with your knowledge, I think.
Thank you.
So, the other thing of interest that's come up is, there's, I don't know if you're aware or not, but well, I'm assuming that councillors do to our trade union members, that the council workers are actually striking currently for the pay. Let me tell council houses that belong to trade unions, and we are people that belong to Unison and Unite. And Unite have one of the 3,000 members, they have announced 23 strikes in September, but currently, when I wrote the findings, I'm not planning anything. I don't have anything to change the past company. Currently, none of the affected town council officers are intending to take part. United has paid for the final decision award of last November, and it's, it will be a similar timescale again this year if the pay is agreed. So, staff will have to wait at least until when to receive this payment. And then, since April, they are, we pay them to pay with, but we have to legally. But also means that we cannot budget, you know, 100% for moving pieces until it is received. And the understanding of it is that we don't receive that final further by when we submit the budget, it will be an estimation at that time for what we think the most likely is actually to be.
Have we asked, have we got to pay demand? And are we meeting that pay demand? What are they asking for on the pay increase?
Well, it's the, it's the national request, isn't it?
Like I said, they got on to you. I think it's a blank at 1925 per.
So, the employers, like I said, the employers last year offered 1925, two out of the three unions accepted that. So, that paid the flat rate, that rate. And then this year, employers have offered 1925, but the unions are, are dispute. Hard work is two out of three unions have to accept the pay. Two out of three unions accept the pay, the other goes through. If none of them accept it, then the unions decide, like, depending on how they go to deal with it. I think that's, so United decided to go and strike, Unison haven't decided any action, and I haven't heard anything from GFB.
I think GFB maybe, I think they were going to vote, weren't they?
That's right. They still have some balance.
And the amount that we've budgeted as a contingency, is that at the 1, the 1.9? Or what the request is?
It's slightly higher. We, we're not sure of what, of what the, what, what the settlement figure is going to be. So, we've had, we had that as well, but we've budgeted it's about seven and a half percent.
Ooh.
And that's an average.
Nice. I just wanted, I just wanted to understand that that underspend figure included a higher figure than the 1.9.
It does.
Thank you. Risk averser cap. Good, I think that's a useful update. Anything else, Tina, you wanted to add?
I don't think so. If there's any question that we want to ask, I think that's, it's hard for them to answer.
Yeah, I was convinced that, for a round, I'm not being rude. Our last meeting, we decided that we must pay. It was, everything I see is online. Sometimes, you're not going to do it place to place now.
Well, when I went to the meeting, they, they don't do the bespoke in-person planning.
What's in that? When we went to Breckland and met the Breckland training, they said that, that we can go and get planning and training from Breckland. Yeah, I've done that. It's going to be the same.
Sure. Was that in person?
Yeah, yes.
I've, I've done some Breckland planning, planning in person.
It's good.
It was excellent. They didn't cover the sort of, a lot of the stuff that we need. So, essentially, the, I must explain, it was all about property, rather than the mechanics of the planning process, which is where I lag. It was very good. It was very good, wasn't it, Chris?
Yeah, it was. I mean, but, I mean, you're quite right. The, the planning training we had here back in the day with the, was far more comprehensive than what we're talking about.
I wonder if those trainers that delivered the Breckland one also have a package geared for parish and town councils. They delivered that for Breckland as the local authority, but I wonder if they have a, you know, a package for town and parish.
Can't be just one provider of them at all.
Worth looking into.
So, planning.
I think this part of the contract for the planning sector, the training for the councils.
Really wide-ranging planning training we had, it must have took me after the, if it talks.
I knew about this question. A person from the tea room that's given their notice, so they accepted that notice, or are we, we talking, I mean, who is talking to them? There's only a couple of people, members of staff.
I have spoken to her. I really understand if I was.
Just on that particular issue, Tina, we, as far as I understand it, there's only about one committee, I think it's allotments, that has an adopted terms of reference at the moment. So, we haven't set terms of reference for finance and personnel, we haven't set terms of reference for heritage and events, or venues and communications, because I was surprised when your email came out that said that the discussion about the role would go to heritage and events, and not finance and personnel, and not venues and communications. I think there's a bit of concern at the moment about what issues go to what committee, because we don't have an adopted terms of reference and a sort of committee structure. So, I'm not sure how we're deciding which issue goes to which place.
I apologize for that. I was under the impression that that was being written, I was told that that was going to be produced. Hasn't been forthcoming, but that's fine. But are the older ones going to be reversed?
No. Post-May, I think I'm right in saying the only committee that's adopted terms of reference is the allotments.
I thought we talked about doing certain terms of reference, right, at the beginning of this council? We said we would do something. I think.
I just think it's a good example where I saw the email and thought, there it goes. But I'm surprised it didn't go to the Personnel Committee for a discussion in a way, so.
I think it's because they're looking at how that role affects the delivery of the events we're doing. And then how that potentially, in order to deliver in a different way.
Yeah.
And that itself is definitely, they're looking at international reform.
Which I don't have a problem with, as long as it's defined. Our accounts are set up that all the personnel budget sits with this committee, not with the individual committees.
But then talking about the actual nuts and bolts of what that person would need to do to perhaps change the inflection of what the tea room affiliation is.
Yeah. I just wanted to make that point, that we are disadvantaged as a council by not having adopted terms of reference. This is the wider point. I don't care about the actual substantive issue in terms of where it goes.
Sorry for, for. We did, the other day, with you and Doug and I and David, we were talking that there are areas that the two committees really, really come across. So, it might be, is there a way of blending those committees together back into one? I don't know, but there's such an overlap. Sorry.
There is an opportunity, it's not, it's part of the old personnel terms of reference, that council have the opportunity to discuss the committee structure at the end of that.
Right.
But only time is needed, being decided so they can be implemented at their making, which is the only time of year when you can change the committee structure.
All right, okay, that might be something to get, to get looked at there.
Given we've got so many new members, it'll be a good opportunity to take a sounding from everybody about committee membership. Uh, given we've got so many new members, it'll be a good opportunity to take a sounding from everybody about committee membership.
Yeah.
And also committee structure, because I, I have heard from a few people that they want to come off certain committees or go on new committees, that sort of thing. Now they've found out what's involved.
Yeah, I mean, I, to me, like personnel and finance, then blend, personnel is one thing, but finance will blend into nearly everything else. Certainly, and, and, and so.
Okay, Tina.
So if they want to change membership, that's actually fine, that's just a staying request by our form council, this actual structure of the committees. If, if members want to go on, they're going to our, that's the other.
So if you change it, it will be in November.
No, it's just a, that has to be in review in November, because we have to have that agreed before the May mayor making, which is.
Can't we just, can't we just do it?
But if people, but if people want to change the committees that they are on.
Yeah.
Then that can be done at any time, it's just our best of all hands.
Yeah, but sorry, I'm, I'm, can't we, can't we collectively as a council say we would like to change the committee structure and just under voting at one point down?
Oh, can't we?
Because standing orders say that you can't revise a decision you make until six months after that decision's been made.
And so we would have to revise all the budgets to go with the new committees. If you're going to do it, then if you look at it in November and that decision is made early in the year, we can do all those revisions as part of the new financial package.
Okay.
It would make sense as well to do it after a decent period of seven, rather than making a knee-jerk.
So when does this overlap that we have found?
Hmm.
We just have to involve people from other committees to spread it around.
Yeah, great.
Yep, I'm not sure that, that we can ever get to a very neat and tidy solution where the boundaries of each committee are defined and they never run across each other. I mean, you've already mentioned yourself there and quite rightly, it's different to finance, which impinging on every camp.
Yeah.
And, and there's no way of avoiding that. So I, I, you know, neat and tidy sounds good, but I don't, we, we, we have changed the boundaries of councils and the names of councils and the responsibilities of councils before, of, sorry, of committees before. I'm not sure that we, uh, have ever got to a perfect solution, you know, which, we're always going to have a situation where various councils push against other, I'm very sorry, committees, push against other committees because there is a clear overlap and they, they just, I think it's inevitable.
Right, fair enough. Okay, Tina.
I hate to mention it because I know it will make some people quiver in their chairs, but the other solution to that is the general purposes committee that you make on your chairs. Who have a monthly meeting to discuss all the overlaps between.
Um, make it to me, but, you know, I don't know. I'll, certain way to be, to discuss that.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna move on if there's anything else under personnel report. The next item is two nine zero, review of reserves policy. Um, I'd like to take this in two parts, because one is the specific wording of the policy that was circulated. And, uh, the second part is the actual headings and, um, names of reserves and, and, and that sort of thing. So the policy was circulated, is there anything, Alan, you want to add to, uh, the actual policy text?
All I've done is I've streamlined the previous policy because we had a whole lot of processes that were actually compassed and didn't take it into account. You know, we don't need manual registers of reserves, uh, uh, it's all done electronically, so it's really just simplified it more than anything else. But the key purposes of the, of the reserves have remained the same, what, what, what type of reserves we have. And the classifications have remained the same, uh, from the previous policy.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on the actual policy? Um, included within the policy, Alan, there's text that refers to the general reserve needing to be, uh, three months operating cost. I think it's really important that we note what that figure is, not just, because, um, uh, it could be anything. Um, do we know at this moment in time what it is?
Uh, I had to do a calculation, uh, yeah, two years ago, it was two hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. I think it's important to record an actual amount, uh, as well. Um, so the second part is the actual reserve headings and, um, there's still quite a lot of reserves that we have. Um, which we don't need anymore, uh, they're set up for a specific purpose and they have, uh, uh, situations have changed. So I've actually been through these and that's circulated today. Um, so I'm going to propose that we, uh, delete the headings and move the money into the general reserve for the marketplace contingency reserve, the V A T contingency reserve, the COVID nineteen reserve and councillor training project reserve. So that's the first bit. The second bit is the allotment renewal reserve and the allotment land protection project reserve should be merged. Exmus decorations, open space reserve and cemetery reserve moved into a new reserve amenities reserve. And the other note I've made is that if capital, uh, if the reserve is a capital pot, it should state that. And my recollection is that the nunnery reserve and the swain close reserve are both capital. Um, and I think we should state that in the reserve text. And there's a whole load of others, isn't there? It's on the screen behind it, that's really helpful, good. Um, and there's some other ones there which we might want to amend. So we've got the St Peter's project reserve. Uh, this reserve sets aside money for any work required on St Peter's church. I think the consensus, consensus is that we leave that one as it is. N L F National Lottery Fund Guildhall Project Reserve. Uh, that's still a live project and the reserve may be, uh, needed, so we leave that one as it is. B F E R, this is a reimbursement grant that can even be taken as income, as capital grant or transferred to the general or amenities reserve. Um, given it was for the river or associated, uh, I think moving it to the amenities reserve would be most appropriate. Waterways earmarked reserve, this was created in twenty nineteen, possibly treat as per B F E R reserve, so again, uh, move that one to amenities. Personnel earmarked reserve to be deleted, yep. Market improvements earmarked reserve to be deleted, yeah. King Square Restricted Reserve, this reserve was created from an accrual at the end of twenty eighteen. The credit was transferred to the reserve and, and the suggestion there is to transfer that to the amenities reserve. Historic England Restricted Use, this was to cover some work on the Two Towers, suggest transfer to property renewal reserves as that is where the costs will be incurred. So that seems perfectly sensible. N C F Archent, I didn't quite understand that one, but, uh, if the conditions of the grant have been met, it seems sensible. What does N C F stand for?
Uh, Norfolk Community Fund.
Norfolk Community Fund, okay, so transfer to amenities and then the two M T I related projects. Um, yeah, it's been a different, and that one's, is that one completed or not? That's still.
Uh, it, it overlapped in the two thousand and three financial year, so it'll be sorted out in two thousand and four. I think I, the order in, they sort of water screen just be provided with the information.
Yeah.
And I think that's all been sorted out. So by the end of the year, it'll be zero and we'll close down the reserve.
Brilliant. And then similar with the Fish Pass Reserve, that's been dealt with, uh, so that will be deleted this year. There's quite a lot of individual movements there, I appreciate. Do feel free to ask if you want explanation as to any project headings or any other information.
Uh, okay, so my, my first one really is about three and four, which is B F E R and Waterways earmarked reserve. Now, I, I get them individually, but actually taking those reserves out completely means we, we effectively take our waterway off the radar completely. And that worries me because it is a major part of our town. It gets very little of our attention as it is. And I think doing that will just accelerate that further. Waterways doesn't sit on any one specifically of our committees. And, and so I see that as a little bit of a safeguard that it will get noticed and mentioned occasionally. Take it out and we just don't talk about it again. And so that's my, my only worry.
Yeah, I'm just looking, so we're talking about.
There's four thousand, it's two thousand.
Yeah, it's about seven thousand pounds in total. I mean, I'm, I don't mind if it goes in to amenities. I suppose there is a danger that, um, it gets diluted, excuse the pun, um, with the other amenities projects. So, um, personally, I'd be quite happy if we, um, uh, something like a river corridor projects reserve.
I, I think that would be brilliant because it would, it, it'd keep it afloat.
Uh.
You can man come in, thank you. All right, that's that done, yeah.
I think it would be handy to have it as a bit of a contingency for the Fish Pass as well, if there's any repairs and that's, so that's not bad, I think.
Chris? Yeah, just clarification, number, so the allotment renewal reserve, the land project reserve. We have one lot of land project reserve that we're not allowed to touch unless it's due a lot, is that what this is?
Yes, one of those.
If we put that in with the other one, that means we can't touch it.
And I think, do you know the one who's, Chris is referring to?
I think the lands, the lotment land project might be that one.
The forty thousand.
Yeah.
About, yeah, which we're not allowed to touch unless it's due a lot of that theoretically.
Uh, I think, time has passed so much now, I, the, you know, I don't think we're going to be, um, we're not going to be forced to adhere to the original terms and conditions. Um.
Oh, aren't we?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, the, the risk the council would take is if we were to spend it, you might want to make sure that we, um, include a liability elsewhere in case they did come back and ask for it back, but we're talking over ten years ago.
Yeah, that's for sure. So I mean, if we do this, then we possibly put the allotment land reserve into the renewal reserve. So that money really depends on.
We can allow that.
So the policy, totally, we'll spend it on, on, on waste disposal from the allotment that we're creating in town.
Because we can't use reserves for revenue costs.
Right, so.
Says in the policy.
So theoretically, that, that would be profit to stay.
If that's what we agree to tonight. And I think that would be sensible because, I mean, we're talking that money came, that forty K came in in two thousand and nine as a result of Fettford Health and Towns. They only lasted a year and then they disappeared. Nobody's gonna worry too much about.
Are you happy with that?
That's a really good, it's good.
Yeah, low risk. In the worst case scenario, you know, we'd have to refind it from somewhere else, but I'm happy with that. Everyone else happy?
Why would, why would we have to refind it? That worries me, because forty grand.
Well, quickly isn't an easy.
I'm flipping on your door.
There's always a risk with grant funding when you reallocate it, that somebody will come knocking at a future day. But we're talking more than ten years now, aren't we?
But if we keep it within the allotment, eh, topic, we're not veering too far off.
Precisely.
Being tracked, are we?
Yeah, it, it's largely being spent on its original purpose.
Is it?
It's largely, it's something it's supposed to do rather than sitting in the bank.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Are you happy with all of those different movements? So the, the sort of total effect is that will reduce the total number of reserves down quite considerably and make it a bit more manageable.
True.
I'm happy to propose that. Is somebody happy to second that? So that's the adoption of the policy and the amendments to the reserves headings. So, uh, Mike seconded that one. Karen, are committee members in agreement with the policy?
Yep.
And is that a recommendation for council?
So we can go to full council.
Lovely. Thank you. Moving on, uh, two nine one. So, um, I know several of you are, uh, interested in or concerned about the number of external grants. Um, council either has or is looking to apply for, so this is the product of that. And we are delivering two quite significant grant-funded projects at the moment. Um, I think there's a wish to have greater councillor oversight of those projects. Um, and also greater oversight in relation to, uh, any future funding bids that get submitted. Um, so it's a proposed new way of working in terms of handling external grants. Uh, so the proposal in the paper that was circulated is to create a new external grants working group that will report to full council. The membership will consist of myself, David Blackburn and Doug Jefferson. David Blackburn will be appointed as chair of the working group. Terms of reference will be to review delivery of all external grant-funded projects against agreed project applications and all terms and conditions, receiving updates from officers as necessary, review and approve formal reports to funders prior to their submission and review all external funding applications and recommend to full council whether or not they should be submitted. Is that clear? Anyone wish to comment, Terry?
Um, I, I think this is, um, a really good scheme. Um, I'm surprised that there wasn't any real audit, given the sums of money that have been put into these projects. I think that has to be counted, uh, functioning council has to have some overview and auditing, self auditing of these things. So I think this is a, an excellent idea.
Anyone else happy? Yeah, uh, so.
Those are good.
Uh, so I, I, I question a couple of things. One, and this sounds really personal, it isn't. Um, on point two, the membership will consist of councillors, Terry, Jeremy, David Blackwell, Doug Jefferson. Uh, I don't quite understand why Doug would be on it, not part of personnel. I, I, that's just a, not personal, clearly.
Can I, can I ask that?
It's my idea.
Um, I put, uh, when we were looking at the, the, the grant for the, for the Guildhall and everything like that, I sent an email round or a text round to everyone here, um, saying, would anybody like to sit on there, come and get involved and meet these guys?
Whatever, yeah.
Nobody responded. And then Doug said, oh yeah, like I'm not on that committee, but I'll come along. And he's put a lot of work into it with me and meeting these guys a couple of times now. And I, I, you know, he's brought you up in and he's put quite a bit of work in looking at things as well.
Yeah, that's really well answered, actually, and it, and it makes it clear. It's just that, you know, that's delivered, yeah, in that format, and I didn't know he'd done that.
No, that's fine.
That's good.
When we're talking about, sorry, just to introduce, when we're talking about committee membership, um, Doug's one of the, I didn't know this about Doug, but he's actually really quite, you know, finance savvy, which I didn't know about him, and he, he, well, he, yeah, he, I didn't know that was his day job at all. And he's actually expressed a desire to come off amenities and join finance.
So he's one of the people I want to know.
Yeah.
That makes sense if that's your, if that's your suit, yeah.
Yeah, I, I've been using him a lot.
I think, I think in general terms, it's always good to have a good working relationship between councillors and council officers and understand what's going on. I don't know why I do, but I feel like terms of reference, review, review, review are all, maybe I'm reading this badly, look a bit micromanaging. And the reason I say that is because if you review the delivery of all those external grants, like the going out and anything that's agreed, and then you review and approve any formal reports that go out, so you're agreeing what happens, you're agreeing how it's written, you're agreeing on the draft external funding applications. We're actually doing it now.
I mean, as you can work quite differently, on the Guildhall one.
Yeah.
Which again, I circulated the, the application and everything like that, there's so many things that are on there that weren't actually done on that application. So it, it's an interesting thing to look at and go back and say, when we're putting the application in. Um, okay, shouldn't be included in that, shouldn't be in that. These guys are the experts on it. There's always not, and I've done applications for allotment on more, you know, on, on a few occasions. And I've delivered projects, so we always had a working team, not just one or two people together, putting a, you know, putting a bid in to make sure we kept the outline as simple as possible, so if things needed to change, you could change what was being delivered but not break away from the terms that you brought the delivery in in the first place.
Yeah, I think I'm trying to read now again why I'm.
We would be using these guys as the experts on it.
Um, I, I don't know whether it's the way, just the way I've read it, the way it's written, but I don't know whether it would sound better if it was work with councillors to review process.
Happy to, sorry.
Because it, it might sound a little bit pointy down rather than working with.
No.
That, that might be just the way I've read it.
I've changed the wording, from my point of view, by the way, because it has to be.
Yeah.
Working with these guys. And I, I, the first time I went into these two was, was it last week or the week before? And just, just to get a bit of information, and they were brilliant at sharing the information and coming out with everything I wanted. And then looking more into Guildhall project, what has happened, and I was absolutely frightened by what we'd agreed to, um, and, and what happened. So it would be rather nice to have some of those guys involved in this.
No, I, I, yeah, absolutely agree with you.
I'm sure that the, um, I'm finding it a bit of a water trap. There isn't any large difference we have to do here for what you're talking about.
I, I, that is, I'd love to go through it with you, show you that. I, in that case, I'd love to go through with you, show you that the evidence that these things have done. One of the things I didn't notice on it was the Two Towers was mentioned in the original application. I'm going to have to get to it, sorry, Terry.
Well, I'm, you're in danger of doing the review early.
Oh.
We're, we're setting up the review, not doing.
Sorry.
I was aware of that, we're dealing with lottery. It's actually one of the risks that once identified was that the damage would be worse than we thought. That's in our initial risk assessment, uh, which actually tends to fruition. And therefore we're working with lottery to find ways of asking each other to.
So if you want us to find out about that, the work with you guys would be great. So, yeah. And sorry, I'll keep quiet.
No, you're all right. Um, I think the other point, Matt, is it's also important that ultimately we are responsible as councillors, that, you know, these funding bids are put in, in, in the council's name, which is us. Uh, and if they go right or if they go wrong, bug stops with us. It's about supporting officers and understanding what they need to deliver these as much as, you know, reviewing and.
No, I, I absolutely accept that and I, and I get it, you know, I'm not trying to be, um, I'm not trying to be pedantic, I'm just, I have concerns. And, and one of the things.
You need to be pedantic.
Yeah, I think so.
To find out those questions, you've got to ask.
So I think also there's, I, I always worry about the danger of us elected volunteers becoming the council. It always worries me that we start taking over people we professionally paid to do a job. And, and I don't think we are at the moment, but I worry that we might creep into that space. But once we do that, that, you know, it will come undone really quickly. They are our continuity.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I think what I would like to be more aware of as a council though, is why we are doing this in a particular way.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's what we come down to.
That's fine. Okay, so we've got a proposal written there, um, uh, which I think will be a resolved if adopted rather than a recommendation to council because it'll be a working group and there's no sort of cost as such. Um, is somebody happy to propose that proposal as written? Chris? Would somebody like to second it?
Oh, I can, can I? Sorry.
I just don't mind who does it.
Yeah. Um. If you want to be involved, Matt, please, please do.
It's one of these, I'd love to be involved, I'd like to be involved in everything, I just can't. You know, and I, I realise my capability here, but I.
You too, by the way.
Fingers in every part, you just can't do it. I'd love to.
Yeah, it, it's important.
Yeah.
So it's been proposed and seconded. Proposed and seconded, all in favour?
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you very much. Um, item two nine two, I'm actually going to propose that we take that one below the line. I'm conscious that we're talking about a relatively small cohort of star, uh, senior management team. Um, so I would feel more comfortable if that one was below the line. Are committee members happy that we've resolved to move that one below the line?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take that one later and we'll deal with the other items first. Uh, item two nine three, external audit report.
Please to announce that there's nothing to talk about, which is what you actually can get an external audit report. Uh, just given, we, we don't have a detailed external audit. We, we, we classified the three classifications for town councils. We followed to classification three. So what happens is the external auditors who are appointed by the National Audit Commission, uh, they appoint external auditors, so they do what they call a nimble. Surely you, they go through all the paperwork, they send us lots of emails, asking questions. We have to answer those questions, provide information and they then, uh, provide support. And it's the first time since I've been here since two thousand and nineteen that we've had a, that audit report, so, uh, uh, something we're prepared to say.
Uh, we are required to recommend that full council notes the external audit report. I'm happy to propose. Is somebody happy to second, Chris? Or in agreement? Thank you. Good news, Alan, well done. Uh, it's. Uh, I actually went back and read the previous external audit report just to see what they did say in the cards that they haven't said this time. Um, and as you say, it's always good to get a, uh, a, a very small piece of paper with not a lot of writing on from an auditor, which is exactly what we got. So well done to you particularly. Um, two nine four, correspondence, do we have any correspondence to note? None? Two nine five, committee officers update, anything uh, to update on since the agenda was released? Yeah. Um, I'm just trying to find the list of action points. Yeah. I'm, I'm, oh, there it is. Uh, so item two nine six, action points. I, I know some of these have been done, so I'll, I'll rattle through them and if anyone can comment on any of them, please do indicate. Uh, so the first action point is Fettford Town Council website. Um, venues and markets will confirm a date that the website will be updated. And I know, Terry, you've had a meeting relatively recently about websites.
Yeah, um, and we're gonna have further meetings. Um, this isn't something you can sort of discuss at a meeting and then you do it. It has to be an ongoing process and, and we're very ready to, uh, David himself and other officers to engage in that process.
No, no, so we'll leave that there for the time being. Um, and you'll come back to us when there's something of note to report. Good. Um, second action point, risk management. Uh, it's hopeless to be done by the thirty first of August, recognition that it may slip as it's linked to the audit. I assume there's been no uh, update on that one at the moment.
I think I'm just expecting to develop a methodology because in my, my, she actually gets it to, so, um, I have to start thinking about it. Um, I will play around with methodology and give some additional impact.
Never kept. Got the right one in probably now. Discussions and action plans to managing waste disposal from a cost environment perspective. Uh, discussions held with Breckland. I don't think there's any further to say on that, we discussed that earlier, but we will stay on there as an action and hopefully by next month, we'll be in a positive position. The finance officer to investigate the business rates for the council chamber, does they seem high? Still on the list?
Obviously.
That's fine, yes, well, no, no, there wasn't actually a date on that one, so it's fine. Uh, local procurement policy, we'll leave that one on there. There was agreement that the E T room trading information will be presented on a monthly basis, will be tabled at this meeting.
I did include a presentation pack. It's just a bit of, uh, my, my, my.
Yep. Okay. Unless anyone, uh, objects, I don't propose we go into that tonight, I don't feel the need to, um, but it's there for information purposes. Uh, the roles and responsibilities document to be updated in a future meeting, next update in October, so we'll leave that one as it is. Town clerk to encourage councillors to attend the induction courses, and I know that was done because we all got the reminder. Thank you, Tina. Uh, so we can take that one off. And the town clerk to see if a planning course could be run again for councillors. Done but online, will explore in person options. Any other action points that people want to add or comment on? Terry?
Um, consider yourself a friend of the river group, not least as I ended up in the river twice the other week, helping them out. Um, what's happening with the container that they've been promised?
Um, I know there's an update, but it's mainly Nick. Can we park that and have an update with amenities? Would that be okay?
They are getting on to me about it and they are fretting about it, um, not least because they'd like it in place before the weather gets bad.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Is there anything we can update on now or is it best to wait for Nick to?
We have, we, we have followed that, uh, but I think we might have to come with Plan C.
Okay.
Is the answer. Uh, we have to work out what Plan C is. The Plan A and B possibly may not work.
Okay.
Uh, Plan A and B may not work.
Okay.
We need third party permissions. Uh, Plan A definitely, we've got no permission. Plan B, I think we're still waiting for that, so we'll, we'll keep pressing and then otherwise we have to come up with Plan C.
We've got a chance there?
Uh, we will keep pressing, uh, for Plan B because that's the best answer.
Yeah.
Uh, Plan C is probably.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we, we'll, we'll keep on trying, you know, we discussed it at the safety level.
Yeah. But in any case, so I think Nick will update as part of the town team report at amenities, so.
Okay.
Okay, nothing further on action points? No? Do I need to read out? Um, sorry, we need engagement. To discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Any particular release? I'd suggest probably not to my agenda. Happy? Brilliant. Do I need to read out the exclusion of press and public?
Yes.
Fine.
Yes, please.
Even spoken. Thanks. It's not, yeah, it's now, yeah.
Okay, so uh, exclusion of press and public, we are in ask to consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Bodies and Missions to Meetings Act nineteen sixty, the press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudiced or prejudicial to the public interest, a reason of the central nature of the business to be discussed. Uh, so given that we are discussing personnel issues, uh, specific to a small cohort of individuals, uh, I'm proposing that we exclude press and public. Do I have a second there? Some of you all in agreement? Thank you very much.
Lovely.
And you're gonna have to give me two.